She like my baby mama, know how to take care of me, get my baby problems, you gonna regret everything. So I let her know, gotta let her know, came through the front door, I'll be ready for, and if it's what you want, I'ma give it to you, yeah, promise, I'ma give it to you.
Miss that smile, Lord knows I ain't seen that in awhile, but it's your style, so something must be up keeping you down. You a queen that must be heaven sent. Pray my soul, I must repent for not telling you what I meant and how I felt. Honestly, I'm used to throwing wishes in the well. My conscience tells me that I could have helped without fail. Actions speak louder than words, and that's a lesson that I learned all by myself.
Here.
All right.
Thank you. Councilmember comments, would any councilmember like to make a comment? Councilmember Strickland.
Thanks Mayor. As you all know, we dared to stand up to Gavin Newsom and Ron Bonta's outrageous housing mandates to defend our Surf City values. We've been sued and singled out, forced to follow a nonsensical housing laws like SB 9, AB 2, 2011, SB 423, which would destroy the fabric of our community. But there is a solution to our issues in an unlikely place, a November ballot initiative to enact residential rent control statewide. Statewide rent control is a ludicrous idea, but the measure's language goes further. It gives local governments ironclad protection from state's housing policy, and therefore overreaching enforcement, including blocking the state's ability to sue our city. If the ballot measure passes, it will allow us to use inclusionary zoning on multi-unit housing, a court-recognized version of rent control, as a way to deny new housing development projects that do nothing but reflect our community values. This is how we take back local control from Governor Newsom, Ron Bonta, and his liberal legislative buddies. I urge this council to closely monitor this measure and consider an endorsement in the future. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Councilmember Bolton? I also have a question, I want to make sure I understand, what is the, what are our requirements in terms of acknowledging or endorsing ballot measures as a city council? Because my understanding was always that we couldn't, as a city, advocate for ballot measures, or advocate against ballot measures.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, that's something that we can take a look at, but the council advocated for the recent ballot measures on the primary.
Individuals, but not the council as a whole?
Even at the council, even at the dais, there were comments for and against by council.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll take a look at it if it ever comes to council.
Yeah, I mean, it just needs to be clarified, because in the past, yeah, what was always said was, oh, we can't do that.
It depends on, at the state level or local level, and there are different things that we've got to look at, but we can get back to you.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
City Attorney, isn't it, if four of us affirmingly vote, it would be the policy of the city? Isn't that your?
Yeah, but, but more importantly, these are councilmember comments, not agendized for discussion, so, so, yes, but I don't think we should spend much more time.
I agree. All right, thank you.
Just individual comments then. So last week, Friday, was California Arbor Day, and in honor of that, the Huntington Beach Tree Society had a tree planting, and planted 50 trees in honor of the society's 50th anniversary, and so Councilmember Moser, I think, were you, were you there, Mayor Protem? Okay, Mayor Protem and Mayor were there to celebrate that. And then secondly, I want to acknowledge the holy month of Ramadan, which is being celebrated by our Muslim neighbors and friends, and Ramadan is the ninth month of the Islamic calendar. Muslims believe that it was during this month that God revealed the Quran to the Prophet Muhammad. During this time, Muslims focus on their spiritual and personal development through practices such as fasting, prayers, family and community events. Ramadan ends with a celebration known as Eid al-Fitr, but I have heard from many people in the community that this year, their celebration is going to be tempered with the knowledge of what's going on in Gaza. So I do want to say, I haven't walked in the shoes of a person from Gaza or a person from Israel, so I wouldn't presume to say that, or pretend that I have a answer or a solution to what's happening there, but I do want to say, you know, that I acknowledge Ramadan, we acknowledge the Muslim community, we hear you and we see you, and we'll continue to pray for peace in Gaza. Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, moving on. Good afternoon. As you'll note, there are some changes to the public comments portion of the city council meeting. It's important to each of my six colleagues and me that the people of this community are able to voice their messages to the city council in a respectful environment. All of your comments are important to us, and we want to hear your messages. Please be respectful of other people's time to speak and personal space. Refrain from interrupting others and provide others with the same treatment that you would like yourself. Tonight, we're introducing a new format to public comments. First, to join the list of speakers at public comments, you can complete a request to speak form in person as early as 30 minutes before the first meeting. That includes study session, closed session, and regular session. In order to be called to speak, requests to speak forms must be turned in to the sergeant-at-arms or the city clerk up until the public comments period begins. Requests to speak made prior to the meeting will no longer be honored. Second, presentations or AV materials must be submitted to staff no later than 9:00 AM the day of the meeting. This change will be implemented beginning with the April 2 city council meeting. The email address to submit your presentation materials is HuntingtonBeach.ca.gov. And third, members of the audience and speakers shall not wear or display signs that obstruct the views of other audience members. Signs shall remain with the holder and shall not be placed in adjacent seats or in common areas. This change will also take effect at the April 2 city council meeting. All of this information is available on the city clerk's webpage and on each agenda. Moving on to announcements and supplemental communications, city clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, for study session item number two, we received two email communications received regarding short-term rental program update.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We have three individuals signed up to speak, I'll call all three down. We have Catherine Levishore, Twyla Hudgens, and Teri Hudgens.
At this time, the city council will receive comments from members of the public on the study session and/or closed session agendas. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person or by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless a volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or actions on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a councilmember on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the city council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire citycouncil@surfcity-hb.org. First speaker, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Vandermark and councilmembers. My name is Catherine Levishore, a resident of Huntington Beach and founder of Huntington Beach Short-Term Rental Alliance. Speaking on behalf of our group, we are advocating today for expanding the short terminal ordinance to include both hosted and non-hosted STRs in Huntington Beach and Sunset Beach. Instead of dedicating resources to chasing down unhosted STRs operating with hosted permits, the city could free up staff time by allowing property owners with unhosted properties to apply and qualify for short-term rental permits. This would streamline administration. Owners have a vested interest in, to ensure safety in their fully furnished multimillion-dollar homes offered as short-term and midterm rentals. By collecting taxes from more unhosted STRs, the city could significantly increase its revenue, its tax revenue stream for short-term vacation rentals. I've outlined a plan in an email to you this, this morning to address underreported taxes and urge for fair, and for fair regulations that include tax and regulated unhosted STRs in Huntington Beach, Sunset Beach, with robust enforcement of the expanded ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi there, councilmembers, Mayor. My name is Teri Hudgens. I'm here to talk to the preparation document, or the document that was put out for this study meeting, and indicate that I think there is some data that's very important here that is missing from the analysis that was done for this session, and particularly with regards to hosted and unhosted properties. And the dates that are identified at the top of each one of these tables, you will see there's a mixture of two-and-a-half-year kinds of numbers, two-year kinds of numbers, other numbers that date back to 2019, and so forth, that are all used in this preparation document. And I think that hosted properties are actually performing better, much better than what are presented here. And I don't know that this document should be taken carte blanche here at this point, but that more time should be spent with the data, and even in terms of when these violations occur on an annual basis. Is it a summertime issue? Is it a wintertime issue? When, when do we see these things take place, and, and how they're being addressed and handled, and what goes with the data, particularly on the compliant detail that I have in front of me that was sent out to us from the Alliance? So I think there's additional work done. I certainly concur that more unhosted properties should be and could be considered. The, the rules and regulations that have been in effect have had an impact, and I think it's time to relax that relative to COVID and otherwise. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, Twyla Hudgens. I just wanted to thank you all so much for all you do. Gracie, you've been an amazing mayor. All you councilmembers are fantastic, and I don't really have an opportunity, I don't speak that often, but I just want you to know how much we appreciate all your efforts, everything you do, all the hard work, all the hours spent, and everything that you've done for our city. My name's Twyla Hudgens, I am a Huntington Beach resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to study session. Could you please call the roll?
Yes, this will be the roll call for the CPAB members. Chair Jackson?
President.
Okay. Vice Chair Paris?
President.
Secretary Hamel?
Here.
Okay. Sorry. Members Hoskinson?
Here.
Inoue?
Can't, absent.
And Latchman. So we do have a quorum. We can continue.
Thank you. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Good afternoon, Mayor Vandermark and members of the city council, and Chair Jackson, and members of the citizen participation advisory board, Charles Kovak, housing manager. With me this afternoon is Greg Wong, he's our senior housing analyst. This afternoon, I'll be presenting the upcoming 2024-2025 Community Development Block Grant funding as recommended to the city council by the CPAB and the Proposed Home Investment Partnership Program funding. Community Development Block Grant, commonly referred to as CDBG, and home investment partnership funds referred to as home funds, come to the city of Huntington Beach as entitlement grants from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, commonly referred to as HUD. For 2024 and '25 program year, the city has not received its CDBG and home allocations from HUD, so the proposed budget is based upon the current year allocations. The city is estimated to receive approximately 1.17 million in CDBG funds and approximately 668,000 in home funds. The total estimated funding available through CDBG and home next fiscal year is approximately $2.5 million. It should be noted that this $2.5 million includes the estimated 2024-25 allocations from HUD, again, based on the current program year allocations, along with estimated carryover funds from prior, prior program years, and program income derived from loan repayments. Prior to showing the CDBG and home funding recommendations, I want to outline the funding process and next steps. The process started last October and December with the notice of funding availability and of application deadline. In February, the CPAB heard presentations from each public services applicant and made their funding recommendations. After this study session today, the city council will consider the final recommendations as part of the 2024-25 Annual Action Plan at a required public hearing on May 7. Upon city council consideration and approval on May 7, the 2425 Action Plan will be submitted to HUD by May 15, and the new program year will begin on July 1. Public participation is a major component in the CDBG and home funding process. The CDBG and home funding process begins every year with that notice of funding availability, inviting applications for eligible public services programs as previously described. This year, the city solicited proposals from more than 25 local social service providers and received six applications. Applications were evaluated for program eligibility, and then the CPAB held three public meetings to review the applications, hear presentations from the applicants, and make funding recommendations for the city's council's consideration. The CPAB's recommendations are based largely on the city's priority objectives for the program that are established by the city council in a document called the Five-Year Consolidated Plan. Our current consolidated plan was adopted in 2020. A 2025 through 2029 called Consolidated Plan will be prepared later this year for consideration by the city council in spring of next year. CDBG is a principal federal program for providing local governments with grants to improve the physical, economic, and social conditions in the communities. The purpose of the program is to create and maintain decent housing and suitable living environment, and to expand, expand economic opportunities for low and moderate income residents. The CDBG activities must meet one of the three national objectives shown here. For the CDBG activities in the city of Huntington Beach, the national objective is met by providing projects and programs that serve and benefit low and moderate income residents. As outlined in the city's 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, the local priority objectives are to address housing, homelessness, special needs individuals, youth, upgrade of public facilities, and infrastructure improvements. The CDBG allocations are broken down by three categories, including a maximum of 15% that can be spent on CDBG public service activities, a maximum of 20% that can be spent on administration, with the balance of 65% allocated to capital and housing preservation projects. On February 22, the CPAB recommended to the city council the following public service funding allocations, based upon the maximum, that 15% of CDBG public services allocation of 175,750. The CPAB recommended four organizations for funding as shown here. It should be noted that the CPAB has made recommendations to adjust the funding in the event that the city receives a higher or lower allocation from HUD than what is presented here. If the allocation is higher than CPAB recommends a 50/50 split of the increased funding, go to the Boys and Girls Club Children's Bureau and Robins Nest. If the funding allocation decreases, the CPAB recommends a 50/50 split of the reduced funding be deducted from Project Hope Alliance and Stand Up For Kids. The recommended allocations for CDBG administration is shown here. The maximum allocation, again, is 20% of the total allocation, which is used for staff salaries to implement HUD programs and public noticing requirement costs. If this funding is not used during the given year, then the remaining portion is typically carried over to the following year as a capital program, program cost and activities. The CDBG capital project allocations are primarily based upon continuing the current projects and programs related to tenant-based rental assistance administration, special code enforcement, ADA infrastructure improvements, and the housing rehabilitation loan grant program. Home is the principal federal program providing local governments with grants for affordable housing for low and moderate income residents, and consists of eligible activities such as housing rehabilitation and tenant-based rental assistance. As with CDBG public services, home capital activities must meet the local objectives identified in the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, including preserving existing affordable housing, creating new affordable housing, and tenant-based rental assistance. Similar to the CDBG funding, home outfunding allocations are broken down by three categories, including a maximum of 10% that can be spent on home administration, 15% on community housing development organization, affordable housing project, we're commonly referred to as CHODOs, and with the balance of 75% allocated to creating new and preserving existing affordable housing. The home allocations are based upon continuing the current TBRA program with service providers Mercy House and Families Forward, which amounts to 400,000 in total, and funding the third year of the mobile home TBRA program for seniors for approximately $467,000. The 15% required allocation for a CHODO project would be reserved for a future affordable housing project that is to be considered for development by the city council. The balance of the funding is for home administration consisting of the maximum 10%. For fiscal year 2425, staff is proposing also to use available home administration funds from a prior year to offset costs in 202425. This includes costs for preparing the aforementioned 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and the related analysis of impediments to fair housing report that are required by HUD. This also includes the HUD mandated requirements to provide fair housing services and some salaries to implement home-related program and activities. Finally, in response to a request for a mobile home TBRA update made at a prior council meeting, staff would like to quickly take the opportunity to summarize the current program status. As the council is aware of, the mobile home TBRA program was approved in November 2022, which through the home program provided rental assistance funding to extremely low and very low-income seniors. Staff advertised and noticed for a one-month period for, asking for seniors to submit an initial application to be placed on an interest list. After the interest list was developed, which consisted of 131 applicants, a lottery was conducted to determine participant order using preferences such as veterans, extremely low income, and those, you know, seniors that are paying more than 50% of income towards rent. As the council may recall, with the current funding available at the time, I initially estimated that the program would serve 15 to 30 seniors. I am happy to announce that based upon the ongoing home funding, the program currently has 52 active participants. Over 800,000 and 900,000 in home funds have assisted these seniors. There are 30 applicants still on the initial waiting list, which if the fiscal year 2425 home funding is approved in May by the city council, will allow staff to continue to assist seniors. If the funding is approved, then chances are the staff will need to open the waiting list up again this summer to provide additional rental assistance opportunities for seniors that own their mobile home. And with that, that concludes the presentation. I'd like to offer any briefings, one-on-one briefings to each councilmember, if you would like to discuss the proposed projects and funding in more detail prior to that May 7 public hearing.
Thank you. Well, we're moving on to closed session. Do you guys have any discussion?
Would you prefer that we don't ask any questions right now and ask them, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I follow?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, you can wait till May 7, when we reconvene for the public hearing. Or if you want, if there are short questions, I'm here to answer anything you ask.
Okay, they're short, I think. It's okay. I saw that we received six applications, but we had reached out to approximately 25 nonprofits. I was just curious, and maybe this is for later thing, but is that less than normal that we, as far as applications received?
That's a good question. I think it has been less than normal, and typically, we do, we have probably around seven, eight, or nine. I think there might be some organizations that have applied in the past but did not receive funding, so they figure, I'm not going to apply, which, you know, as these funds are very limited, it's, it's very difficult for the, the board here to make decisions on, on recommendations for funding. So, some may just got burned out on, on, on applying.
Okay. And then just two more items. One is, I know you discussed, we're not exactly sure what the dollar amounts will be, but there is potentially a, an increase or decrease in various entities that you mentioned. The one thing I would say is that I know Stand Up For Kids works with a lot of different age groups, but Build Futures went under this last year, and I believe Stand Up For Kids absorbed some of the transitional aged youth. And I, I think maybe, other than Robins Nest, that might be one of the only entities here that is supporting that age group. So I just want to make sure that that was considered, and we can talk about that privately, but I just wanted to mention it.
Absolutely.
And then, thank you also for the mobile home TBRA update. It's incredible that we have 52 residents that were assisted, and I'm glad that it looks like we're going to be able to hopefully open that up again. And I also wanted to thank the Huntington Beach Council on Aging for partnering with the city to assist additional residents who had applied. So, thank you. Oh, actually, one more thing. The CHDO reserves were significantly higher this year versus last year. I think last year was 100,000 versus 300. Is that a carryover?
Yeah, there's a carryover. That's a total of three years. I think it was a little over 300,000, but, but it was a carryover. So we have three years of, you know, banking that money.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're moving on to the short-term rental program update. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Thank you. We'll just rearrange the seats and get the staff settled just a minute.
Is that a carryover?
Yeah, there's a carryover. That's a total of three years. I think it was a little over three hundred thousand, but it was a carryover. So we have three years of, you know, banking that money.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're moving on to the short-term rental program update. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Thank you. We'll just rearrange the seats and get the staff settled just a minute.
My name is Steve Holtz, and I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development. This item before you is an update of the city's short-term rental program. And joining me for this presentation are Jimmy Hong, City, our Code Enforcement Manager, and Sokar Kong, our Permit and Plan Check Supervisor from the Community Development Department, Kim Engel, Business License Supervisor from the Finance Department, and Joyce Sacks, Deputy City Treasurer, and Colin Stevens, Treasury Manager from the City Treasurer's Office. As brief background, on September third, two thousand nineteen, the city council held a study session on short-term rentals. Four coastal cities were studied, Carlsbad, Capandaria, Newport Beach, and Pismo Beach, and a range of regulatory approaches were studied. Following the study session, staff conducted community outreach and additional research in return to council one year later, where the council expressed a desire for a high threshold regulation with the idea of taking baby steps in beginning to allow short-term On February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the new short-term rental ordinance became effective. The ordinance allowed hosted short-term rentals, except for Sunset Beach, which allowed unhosted, to honor the way the county previously dealt with these rentals. In the summer of two thousand, two thousand twenty-one, the council created an ad hoc committee to receive additional input from interested parties. And then in December twenty twenty-one, the council approved an ordinance extending the date for Sunset Beach property owners to receive an unhosted permit to March first, two thousand twenty-two. After this date, all new permits citywide may only be for hosted short-term rentals. The state was also the date the code enforcement began enforcing the ordinance. So we're effectively now two years into this program. And this presentation summarizes the data that we've collected over this time. The three departments shown here are responsible for administering the short-term rental program. Community Development issues short-term rental permits and ensures compliance with the short-term rental ordinance. Finance issues business licenses after short-term rental permits are issued. And the City Treasurer's Office collects TOT and T-bid revenue from the operators. This slide shows the number of valid short-term rental permits by year. The blue represents hosted permits, which means the property owner must live on-site. The orange represents unhosted, which means the full property can be rented and the owner does not need to live on-site, and these are only located in Sunset Beach. As of December two thousand twenty-three, there were one hundred fifty unhosted and fifty-four hosted permits for a total of two hundred four short-term rentals in Huntington Beach. This number does not include permits that were canceled or revoked last year. This slide shows a heat map of where the permits are located. As you can see, there's concentrations within the coastal zone, particularly in Sunset Beach and near downtown, but they're really located all over the city. This slide shows revenue collected from permitted short-term rentals from program inception through two thousand twenty-three. The T-bid assessment is four percent and TOT is ten percent. You can see here that revenue is further broken down by hosted and unhosted. The circled number represents the city's total TOT since program inception. Just to point out why this data only goes through December of last year, this T-bid and TOT revenue is collected quarterly from the short-term rental operators. Payment for each quarter is due thirty days following the end of the quarter, and there is an additional window of thirty days for the operators to remit their payment. So it takes two months to collect the revenue, and then the City Treasurer's Office manually reconciles the payments, which takes a few additional weeks. So it takes quite some time to receive and process this revenue. This slide shows just city TOT revenue, broken down by year and by hosted and unhosted. The blue bar represents hosted permits, and the orange bar represents unhosted permits. If you recall from the slide showing the number of permits, there are, there are currently one hundred fifty hosted permits. Last year, those rentals generated six hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars in TOT, or roughly four thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars per permit. There are fifty-four unhosted permits. Last year, those unhosted rentals generated two hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy dollars in TOT, or roughly five thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars per permit. We use a third party that analyzes data on short-term rental platforms on the internet to inform us if there are advertised rentals that do not have a permit. It's important to know that this number is only an estimate because there are a large number of platforms out there, and some are hard to monitor, and some property owners advertise on multiple platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO, which might be counted as two rentals. But most of the online platforms are monitored, and most of the duplicates are caught, so we believe this is a good estimate. As you can see, the number of unpermitted short-term rentals has decreased, and I think we can say this is due to code enforcement's efforts and the program maturing. Now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Code Enforcement Manager Jimmy Hong to go over some code enforcement data.
Thank you, Steve, Mayor, members of the city council. So this slide shows the total number of complaints filed against a property owner who obtained a permit to conduct short-term rental. So for example, if the owner obtained a permit after June first, complaints relating to any kind of STR violation would be reflected in this data. The numbers do reflect calls for service reported to both PD and code enforcement. In two thousand twenty-two, we started out with a higher number of complaints reported for both the hosted and unhosted STRs. In two thousand twenty-three, we did see a downward trend in complaints for both types of rental. In this complaint detail slide, we broke it down to eight different categories: no owner in sight, noise, maintenance, occupancy, construction, parking, trash, and other. An example of other category would be like an STR being converted to a sober-living operation, which we have seen in the past, or the house is missing a required sign on the front window with the owner contact information. The third and fourth columns represent the confirmed violations, and the total number of addresses in the parentheses as showned. Please do keep in mind that the, a property may have multiple violations, so we've confirmed multiple violations at a, a property. And so for both categories of no owner in sight and noise complaints, the percentage of confirmed violations are equal. In this slide, we have issued over a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in administrative citations for confirmed violations. Each fine is a thousand dollars. Due to this effort, you may have seen a decrease in advertisements on Airbnb and various platforms. And based on our investigation and the evidence we have obtained, the city has prevailed on all citations when they are appealed. There was an example where an owner was renting out an STR, supposed to be hosted, we got a complaint that it's not hosted, we tracked her down, she was actually a licensed doctor in Missouri, and she was actually practicing at the time when she conducted the STR activity. Twenty-seven permits were, have been canceled by the owner due to a variety of reasons. It could be too difficult to comply with an STR ordinance, or they were in the process of selling the home. And there is one permit for hosted that was revoked by the city after we issued three citations in a twelve-month period. And complaints can be reported twenty-four-seven at the numbers shown on the slide, and they can press option number three to connect to the live operator.
So in summary, as of the end of two thousand twenty-three, there were two hundred four short-term rental permits, fifty-four for hosted in Sunset Beach, and one hundred fifty for unhosted citywide. Both hosted and unhosted short-term rentals are generating revenue for the city with just under one million dollars collected last year. People advertising for a short-term rental without a permit has declined from a high of eight hundred sixty-seven in two thousand twenty to one hundred thirty-five at the end of last year. The top two complaints against permit holders is for hosted rentals operating with the owner, without the owner living on-site, and noise with confirmed violations against twenty-four percent of permit holders for each. And lastly, complaints have declined thirty-two percent in the last two years, from one hundred eighty in two thousand twenty-two to one hundred twenty-three in two thousand twenty-three, which is a positive trend we think is due to the program maturing, and we believe it also reflects that most permit holders want to be good neighbors. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for all that work you guys put into this. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, dude, just on like the, the revenue, how do you, how are you guys verifying what the STR is actually charging and reporting to the city in terms of like their average daily rate?
So I will punt that over to our city treasurer staff.
So currently, our operators are not required to submit an average daily rate or the number of days that they have rented their home. They just submit a quarterly report, and it's really on the honor system, so we don't have that detailed information, which is the same thing that we ask of our hotels.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Thank you, staff, for putting together the, kind of the bring-back on this as we've kind of moved our way through this. And I think when we started this, I guess, two years ago, prior to, I mean, prior, when I got on council, I think the discussion kind of went around, we had a thing here that was operating flat-out illegally, and we had no real way to kind of regulate it in a sense, other than you're operating illegally. There was a long process to get through to shut illegal STRs down. We weren't benefiting from any of it, and it was a giant time suck for code enforcement. And it seems like the policy's kind of matured, and we're generating a million dollars a year in revenue now. Complaints are way down. I think we need a little bit more information, though. And I don't know if council will be interested in having some information come back, but it seems like we're still chasing after basically a permitting issue as opposed to a nuisance issue. And I'd like a little bit more detail on if the, the no permit issue is also linked to the noise issue, right? Because that's like, I think, the number one issue that folks have. They don't want to live next to a party house. I think so, I don't know if, again, council's interested in that. But it does look like we still have a bunch of folks that are operating, again, the original policy of this was not introducing something new, but regulating something that's already here. And it seems like we're still haven't caught kind of the large group, because it still seems like the heat map shows that a large number of these are located in the coastal zone, which I don't know when the Coastal Commission's going to get rowdy on STRs, and then kind of the numbered streets in Old Town, based on, I guess, slide, there's, slide six. So I'd be interested to see if staff could potentially come back with some more information as to like what small baby step expansion would be and the revenue attached to that? Like what's the kind of risk reward?
So just, just to clarify, I apologize. This map is for the permits.
Sure.
It's not for the unpermitted.
Right, but I think one could make a, a leap to, to that, but that's also hosted permits as well, right?
These, these are both combined.
Right, so I think that there's likely some folks that we still haven't captured in that, but also I think going from hosted to unhosted to see if there's, again, it seems like a lot of the complaints are code enforcement going out for somebody that has the wrong permit. And again, the original idea was, well, nobody had permits, everyone was operating, so why don't we get right with where the, kind of, the market's going and build a regulatory structure around the market, but protecting residents? I think like the biggest concern is still our enforcement, right? Like, it sounds like, A, for potential revenue, we got an email from a couple of folks saying that there's likely a massive under-report of, of revenue that we're potentially even on the table. But also, I think we need a few more, maybe tweaks to, some tools in the tool belt for code enforcement to shut down some of the illegal ones. But it kind of seems like there's money left, money on the table potentially for either conversion of existing or grabbing a couple of more folks that are still operating illegally to bring them into the fold, and then maybe cut down on some of the code enforcement time going after, like, you have the wrong permit. And so again, I'd be interested to have staff kind of do a little bit of analysis and come back in maybe a month or two with kind of, again, the risk reward of like, if there's some policy changes that make sense along with like what the revenue could be, because I think, you know, we're definitely going to be starting looking for some revenue sources here, and this is something that effectively it seems to be working well. And we're not getting, I'm not getting hundreds of emails from folks complaining about STRs. You get one or two about a nuisance one, and we, you know, the three strikes and you're out policy seems to be somewhat tamping that down. So those are my comments. I don't know if council, other council members agreed, is to get, get some more information, not tie us to anything.
I have a quick clarifying question, if I may, regarding the, so, one of the questions was if there's a link between the noise issue and the unhosted, if those, if there's a link between those two complaints. That was one request for information. And then on the revenue potential, you're talking about just in the coastal zone?
I think the coastal's, I mean, I think in the, the heat map here, right? I think it's the coastal zone and the adjacent, RM, what do you have, what do you call it? RMHA?
The Old Town town hall.
Yeah, yeah, where the, kind of, the, the heat map is. Again, like, that seems to be where most of it is, and that's not, and I think anyone would call that affordable housing, and I think that was also the other half of the policy was, we don't want to take affordable, attainable housing, if you will, off the market and make it vacation rentals. So I think that I would be hard-pressed to find affordable housing in the coastal zone or in the numbered streets at this point in the housing market. But I think that looking at kind of that to see again what revenue is potentially still there, and then I think the, the other piece would be.
Code enforcement?
Yeah, what, what code enforcement's kind of time is being spent. It looks like, obviously, here, but I'd like to see the, kind of, two linked together.
So I have a question, if I may. With respect to the Coastal Commission, I am curious if the staff has any update on what the Coastal Commission has said about short-term rentals in the coastal zone, because I think the last we heard when we talked about this, there was a possibility that they may say they have jurisdiction over STRs and we don't, or they may be, I don't know, able to require cities to permit STRs within, just within the coastal zone. So has there been any development in that respect?
Well, one, I'm, I'm not sure how much we can get into this discussion. I think we have a pending lawsuit regarding or surrounding the issue of short-term rentals in the coastal zone, but I don't think the Coastal Commission has put in a new policy language out regarding short-term rentals. I will say that in general, the Coastal Commission has had a shift, particularly in the last year, on housing as a priority land use in the coastal zone, which is a complete one-eighty. I would say in the last twenty years and in the Coastal Act, housing is, is a low, what's called a low priority land use in the coastal zone, and due to state legislation, some of the direction I think that the governor's office has given to some of the state agencies, the Coastal Commission has changed, has shifted its stance on housing. So I don't know if that'll change the way that it provides policy direction on short-term rentals. We haven't seen anything new.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick question with regards to some of Councilmember Kelmick and also McKean's questions, if we are going to bring back some additional information later. With regards to validating the average daily rate, just maybe if we could look and seek any best practices that might have changed since we initially implemented the program, also whether we want to continue getting quarterly reporting.
also whether we want to continue getting quarterly reporting versus some other time period, just to make sure that we're capturing the entirety of the revenue that the city is owed from these properties. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, or Mayor Proton Burns.
Chief, just a question, is there a, I'm supposing the officers respond to noise calls when there are some, and during those investigations, they probably ascertain if it's a short-term rental. Do they forward those, that information that it's a short-term rental, possibly unpermitted short-term rental to code enforcement?
If they receive that information, they'll pass it on. There's no requirement for them to do that at their call for service.
If there can be a link somehow that they just say, dispatch, forward an email to code enforcement regarding that location.
Yeah, we can do that.
Madam Mayor, and Chief, if I may answer that question as well. So dispatch has, from time to time, forward that information over to code enforcement, and we do follow up on that the very next day. So we have dispatch who does do that from time to time.
Councilmember McKean.
Just to clarify, so the hotels and the STRs report their revenue to us on the honor system?
Subject to audits, but yes, they do. It's self-reporting.
Is that common practice in other cities? Really? Okay. Thank you.
You said subject to audit. How frequently has the, I guess, maybe the hotels or the STRs been audited?
We haven't begun an audit program with the short-term rentals yet, but in the past, on the hotels, it was on a rotating three-year cycle. Due to COVID, we did give them some special circumstances where they were allowed to hold on to their funds, and we're still looking at ramping back up on an audit program for the hotels.
So we haven't audited since COVID?
2019, I believe, was the last audit, and we would work with finance on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to closed session now.
Mayor, sorry, really quick, I just wanted to make sure that we have some general, I guess, guidance from the council to, in the next couple of months, to bring back information regarding code enforcement tools, potential revenue with, for the program in the coastal zone and surrounding areas, and then also the linkage between the noise issues and the unhosted permits. Is that, am I seeing a general...
And revenue audits?
And revenue audits. Am I seeing a general nod from the council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're good. Okay, closed session. Including a closed session, we will be in conference with world property negotiators: Property 21 and 22 Main Street, Huntington Beach, California, 92648; City Negotiators: Eric Parra, Acting City Manager Travis Hopkins, Assistant City Manager Chris Casanova, Economic Development Manager Steve Holtz, Deputy Director of Community Development Jennifer Villasenor, Director of Community Development Negotiating Parties, Persons to Be Negotiated With But Not Present, Surf City Partners LLC Under Negotiation, Price and Terms of the Payment. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second. Going to closed session.